I'd like to call the meeting of the regular Board of Education meeting for April, on April 23rd, 2024. If you will stand, Ms. Brandy Waters will lead us in prayer, and Mr. Busta Tire will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we humbly come before you tonight. We are thankful and grateful to serve the Ware County school system. Thank you for this privilege, Lord. We ask that you put a hedge of protection around all of our students and our staff, Lord, for today, tomorrow, and the remainder of the school year. And, Lord Jesus, we just ask that you be, give us sound minds and peaceful hearts, peace in our hearts, Lord, for the taking care of the school business. Lord, we ask that you be close to those in the community that were affected by the tragedies over the weekend, Lord. Ask that you draw near to the brokenhearted, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, board members, you have before you, item number four is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Toni Nelson approved it. Coach Gaines has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Okay, item number five, public comment. Is Ms. Branswell here? Okay. All right. Ms. Anna Smith, if you'll come forward. I need to read the policy before you get started. The Ware County Board of Education welcomes and encourages citizens to be involved and attend its meeting. As a part of its general operating procedure, the Board offers an opportunity for Ware County residents, businesses, organizations, and school system employees to address the Board at its regular monthly meeting. The public comment period is designed to gain input from the public pursuant to the guidelines outlined in Policy BCBI and not for immediate response by the Board to the public comment presented. To be placed on the agenda, individuals who request to appear before the Board must notify the superintendent's office in writing by completing the public participation request form and submitted at least 24 hours prior to the regular monthly meeting of the Board. The request must state clearly the topic or issue to be addressed. Each person who is named is placed on the agenda will be given five minutes to make comments. When several citizens wish to address the same topic or issue, the group should designate a spokesperson. The Board will not permit anyone to become personally abusive of individual Board members or Board employees. The Board will take comments and questions under advisement until there's been time for the superintendent to look into the matter. You have five minutes, Ms. Smith. All right.
All right. The Georgia Open Records Act gives citizens the right to certain agency records, and on March the 1st, 2024, I requested those records so that I, as a taxpaying voting citizen of Ware County, could either confirm or dismiss allegations of misappropriated and missing funds along with ethics violations by a Ware County employee. I wanted to better understand this matter. After reading the report, I was shocked, appalled, and disheartened, not so much by the actions of the employee but rather the Board. I quickly reached out to my district board member, Brandy Waters, in hopes that she could help me understand how and why this Board acted as if though no laws had been broken. My questions to her ranged from why local law enforcement was not called to did the Board members vote on all the issues, some of the issues, none of the issues? Is it common practice for one Board member to make a decision? Why would the Board go against the superintendent's recommendation of termination for this employee? With all these questions asked and me quoting from the records, she took interest in one particular statement made by the Board member Barry Dees. The statement was to the superintendent to discontinue the investigation and...
Are you named an employee? You're not allowed to name employee.
Oh, I thought it just said not to bully an employee. I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead, but don't mention any more.
I won't, I won't. The statement was to the superintendent to discontinue the investigation on the employee and to allow the employee to return to work without paying any of the funds back, and that he would not accept a resignation/termination recommendation of the employee. So I ask, was it a he decision or were we the Board decision? Is the Board truly made up of seven members? Are all seven members privy to the same information or are some left out and told on a need-to-be basis? The statement made by the Board member on February 9th was only seven days after the employee was sent home. He wanted the employee to return to work, and keep in mind, by this time, local law enforcement still was not called by this administration. Laws were broken, ethics codes were violated. Please remember, these are tax dollars. Why would we not want them paid back? The employee himself offered to pay the monies back immediately if need be, but the Board said no funds to be paid back. He was then put back to work with a handful of stipulations to follow. The Board was hoping, was the Board hoping that no one would notice, that no one would ask any questions? Was he just a return and everyone act as if nothing happened? Well, my guess is yes. There were no more laws broken from the discovery time in January to the last call meeting in April the 15th. The only difference was the Board had been exposed for reinstating an employee that had clearly broke many laws and ethics violations. I had multitudes of copies of this report made and handed them out to as many people in the community as I could, not to shame the employee but rather to educate the community on how the Board views criminal acts and misappropriated tax funds. The employees of the Board of Education made great effort to step-by-step record and document all discoveries and findings of wrongdoings by the employee. Nothing in this report was in a gray area. It was all black and white. So I ask, did the Board or Board members protect this employee? Do you protect all employees to the same degree? Don't know. I will say it again, if it were not for these records that had been read by the community, nothing would have been done with this employee. You were forced to terminate him because the open records, we all read firsthand what you were willing to overlook for an employee, period. The article in the paper read as if the Board just stepped up and took care of business, but that certainly wasn't the case from the almost well-written article. There was a very big omission, and that was the one that stated the demands that the Board put on the superintendent. You know, like, stop the investigation, don't pay the money back, no termination, go back to work. The truth lies in the open records. And I will assume since these open records showed the Board in a not-such-favorable light that that is why you voted to get the names of everyone requesting the records from now on, and I will gladly request them for the people not wanting to give their names and anyone requesting the ones that I already have, I would love to compare them to ensure that the content remains the same. Ware County, please start holding your Board member or members accountable for tolerating and protecting criminal acts amongst their employees. Thank you.
Our, our policy is designed not to discuss or anything tonight, but there was some misrepresentation as far as I'm concerned. We'll go on to presentations. Have Mr. Andrew Bennett, our band director, high school band director, he's here to make a presentation of one of our students.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing us to be here tonight to honor and celebrate one of our band students at the high school, Liz Osborne. She is a senior this year at Ware County High School. In the course of the fall, students in band, middle school, high school audition for what's called All-State Band, which is pretty much what it sounds like. It's students all across the entire state of Georgia that audition for minimal spots in an ensemble that performs in Athens. In this case, usually All-State Band has somewhere around 10,000 students that audition all the various instruments that are in the band. Trombone, more specifically, which is the instrument that Liz plays, usually has, by the time they get to the final round, somewhere around 300 to 400 trombone players that are auditioning, and there's about 20 spots. So, very, very, very low percentage of opportunity, and she has definitely stepped up and accepted that challenge and is a great asset to the band program and hopefully is somebody that other kids coming up to the high school can kind of look towards. And she's going to be attending Troy State University next, in the fall, so she'll be a Trojan in the fall. I know we don't like to say that word around here, I'm sorry, I apologize. But, so she's going on to do great things. She is going to study music education at Troy, so we're looking forward to see where that takes her. So, thank you guys again for letting us be here.
Congratulations.
Call up Johnson up for the April Golden Achievement Award for Daffodil.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Bernice Duggan, Daffodil's school nutrition manager is magnificent. She always arrives to work early to prepare nutritious and delicious meals for our students and staff. She greets the boys and girls with a smile and dance every day as they walk through lunchroom. She has a positive attitude with her lunchroom crew and exhibits a happy and cheerful attitude with Daffodil staff members. Ms. Duggan is always ready to decorate the lunchroom for different activities and holidays to make our students and their families feel special. She decorates for Thanksgiving, Christmas, Valentine's, and St. Patrick's Day. Ms. Duggan dresses up for Read Across America Days, Georgia Pre-K Week, and Red Ribbon Week, and she sets up the tables to display special treats to give to our little gators. Ms. Duggan ensures that the lunchroom tables and floors are spotless for our little learners. She takes pride in being the best school nutrition manager. Ms. Duggan has a kind heart and giving spirit. She is not only busy being the lunchroom, but she is also visible throughout Daffodil building, being a bright and shining star for all to see. We are happy to have Ms. Bernice Duggan as our school nutrition manager. Congratulations. It gives me great pleasure to present to Ms. Bernice Duggan the Certified Golden Achievement Award. She is an amazing special education teacher and school psychologist. We have truly been blessed and fortunate to have such a kind and hard-working school psychologist this year. Ms. Robbins, she works with students individually and in small groups on academic skills to ensure they meet their instructional and developmental needs. She assists teachers with calculating academic and behavioral data. She prepares assessment forms for lead teachers. Ms. Robbins is a mentor to our special education staff members. Ms. Madison Robbins is always willing to lend a helping hand wherever she is needed. She monitors students in the lunchroom, classrooms, pit room, and in the front office. She is the response to intervention coordinator and is responsible for creating behavioral strategies to assist students and teachers in the classroom. Ms. Robbins also creates daily behavior forms based on students' individual behavioral needs. Ms. Robbins leads parent meeting workshops. She redelivers information on essential topics such as autism and age-appropriate behaviors for pre-K students. We are so proud to have her as a part of our Daffodil family. She communicates well with our parents and community stakeholders to ensure the students' academic, social, and emotional needs are met. She has a love and passion for working with students, staff, and family. She enjoys her job. Ms. Robbins has an awesome can-do attitude. Congratulations. It is an honor to present to Ms. Madison Robbins the Certified Golden Achievement Award.
Congratulations to the winner in the All-State Orchestra as well. Proud of all of you. Item number eight, superintendent.
Yes, recommend for approval of payroll on the first month totaling $6,399,197.74 as of March 29th. Financial report was given last night. Enrollment report reflects 5,946 students as of April 16th. Last year's number was 5,00939. Significant calendar dates, April 24th, fourth quarter progress reports. Next Tuesday night, I want to mention this, Nick Ellis will be here from the State Board of Education here at 7:00. Public is invited to voice their concerns or for more information. Also, graduation is May 18th, and our baseball team won first game 15 to nothing.
15 to nothing. Three runs, three innings.
Three innings. Heard the recommendation, the superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. Tire made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number nine, approve minutes of the meeting, the following meetings, March 11th, March 12th, March 18th, April 8th, and April 15th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second it.
All right. Coach Gaines made the motion. Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. All right. Item number 10, superintendent.
Yes, recommend for approval request, organize the AAA School Safety Patrol Program at Ruskin. The safety patrolers are school-sponsored student volunteers who will direct children not traffic and do not cross roads or cross faults on which vehicles travel. They will teach other students about traffic safety on a peer-to-peer basis. The patrolers will serve as role models for younger children. There is no fee involved, and all students must have permission from parents or legal guardians to participate in the AAA School Patrol Program.
All right, you heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second it.
All right. Mr. Busta Tire made the motion. Ms. Toni Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number 11.
Yes, recommend for approval to review results of the Georgia School Board's Governance Assessment completed by the governance team.
Heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Coach Gaines seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number 12.
Yes, recommend for approval the Georgia Partner Mentor Partnership for FY25, the Transitional Disabilities Agreement with Action PAC for FY24, '25, a contract with allied instructional services, a contract with behavior management consultants, and approve the Georgia Southern University Amendmental Understanding.
All right. Okay, you've heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Waters made the motion. Mr. Dees seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number 13.
Yes, recommend for approval, Coach Everett's request to seek funds by pocket of the Walmart Community Grant for the purpose of purchasing P equipment and manipulants. The grant has rolling deadlines, so multiple applications may be made until funding is secured.
Heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Toni made the motion. Coach Gaines seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number 14.
Recommend for approval the bid submitted by National Security Group for 24-25 school student football insurance coverage. School day coverage is $14, 24-hour accidents 42, and interscholastic football is $55.
All right. Heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Mr. Tire seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to encourage parents to take this out. It's not that expensive, and if something happens, it can save you from having to spend a lot of money, and it's good insurance. Okay?
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number 15.
Yes, recommend for approval request from the Technology Coordinator to renew ATC's five-year contract to provide land services for Ware County schools at discount rate of $1,025 per month. The funding source is the general fund. And then recommend for approval the internet access, the five-year contract with ATC for internet access for a discounted rate of $260 per month. The funding source is the general fund. And then the network attached storage application replacement for, to purchase the network attached storage appliances, oh, forgive me, from Lockstep Technology Group at the price of $248,996.38. This will be funded through CARES III, and this is for a six-year, including the additional install service every three to four years when a hardware upgrade is available.
Okay, you heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Coach Gaines made the motion. Mr. Dees seconded. Any discussion?
We'd just like to say that this was discussed in detail last night. It's not something we just hear and put the first time and vote on it.
All right. I want to ask one question. While we're talking about technology, did everything go okay today with testing?
Well, we had one issue at Ware's Borough where the rats ate the fiber. Because of the field cross, the way it got cut, so the rats came to the school and ate the fiber, but cops told them to hang right out and categorize it by non-cause. That's a fur. You just never know.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number 16.
Yes, recommend for approval request to direct facilities for the final payment of the very high entrance canopy in Memorial Stadium to cakelman construction for the canopy at $3,654, the stadium recognition wall for $5,147.19, and then Architect Doug Neal for the canopy at $6,388.50, and then Architect Doug Neal for the recognition wall for $45.
Okay, you heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved. Second it.
All right. Mr. Dees made the motion. Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion?
I will say this, the, I was out at the high school during basketball season tournaments, and the covered canopy really came in handy because a couple nights I was out there, it rained, and it was really nice that people didn't have to get soaked getting into their cars. That's something we should have had a long time ago.
Should have been a long time ago, yes.
It's really serving its purpose.
Very helpful now. All right. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. All right. Item number 17.
Yes, recommend for approval the field trip request for Ruskin Ware's Borough and Lake Cross Middle.
All right. Heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second it.
All right. Mr. Tire made the motion. Ms. Nelson did the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number 19.
Yes, recommend for approval, the fundraisers from Daffodil Lake Cross Middle and Ware County High School.
Heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Coach Gaines made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number 19.
Yes, sir. Yeah, recommend for approval request for the Ware County High School gym to be used on July 20, 2024 for the Purple Hope Foundation's Transform Our Community Youth Summit at usual customary fees. The request was made by Tammy Carter, and then the request for Ware Middle Auditorium, request was made by Lonnie Roberts for the June 6th, 2024, and June 13th, 2024 Coastal Pines Technical College Rehearsal and Graduation at usual customary fees. And then the Memorial Stadium on October 15th, 2024 for Silla RMC's Annual Meeting at usual customary fees. Request was made by Matt Parker.
Okay, you heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second it.
All right. Mr. Tire made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number 20.
Don't have to forgive me, I had to see. I just, yes, you'll see it. I'll read it in just a second. I apologize. It came in today, didn't it?
Later.
I'm sorry. Recommend for approval the request of the use of the Room at the Transportation Department Building for the Board of Elections and Registration Office from May 20th, 20, from May 20th to 22nd, 2024, and June 17th through 19th, 2024 for the general primary special election with waiver fees. Request was made by Carlos Nelson. Then use the community room at the stadium for the same dates for the general primary and special election with waiver fees. Request was made by Carlos Nelson. And then recommend for approval the request for use of Ware Middle's auditorium on April 27th, 28th, 2024 for Commissioner Norman Davis's wake ceremony and funeral with waiver fees. Request was made by Patrick Simmons. I apologize for that.
Okay, heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Ms. Brandy Waters seconded. Any discussion?
How long was he on the commission? Do we know?
A long time. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. All right. Item number 21. As far as I know, we do not need an executive session. All right. Item number 22.
Yes, recommend for approval request from Director Special Ed to hire two halftime Special Ed teachers for FY25. One will be at Memorial Drive, the other will be at Ware's Borough.
All right. Heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved. Second it.
All right. Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number 23.
Yes, recommend for approval the request from Assistant Director Transportation for Jody Merritt to work additional days as a mechanic from June 1st, 2024 to July 31st, 2024.
All right. Heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Coach Gaines made the motion. Mr. Dees seconded. Any discussion?
I think this is to help get all the buses ready for the state.
Yes, it is. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. All right. Superintendent, item number 24.
And just remember on A, we did add the lower question last night on the classified transfer that's there. So recommend for approval the personnel report in sub-items A through G as presented.
All right. You heard the recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion.
So moved. Second it.
All right. Ms. Waters made the motion. Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion?
I'll be abstaining on this.
Hearing no other discussion, Coach Gaines is going to be abstaining on this. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Okay. Item number 25 is other. Coach Gaines, do you have any other other?
Well, I'd just like to say that our condolences and prayers go out to the families who suffered losses this past weekend, even though some of the children were not our students. They're from neighboring county. Also, two of our students did, former students, did lose their lives. So, you know, it's tragic when you have the loss of any life out there. And, well, I say two, three, three of our former students lost their lives. So that's tragic, and the heart goes out to them. I hope all the testing goes well and our students do well. We're seeing a little bit of improvement every year in the, in the schools, and so we just want to keep plugging away and doing that. On another note, I was having the opportunity to attend the Marketing Industry and Certification Program last Thursday out at the high school when the marketing students of Miss Kilmark made presentations to the state, I don't know what you call them, inspectors, whatever, the certif, people from the state. when the marketing students of Ms. Killmark made presentations to the state, um, I don't know what you call them, inspectors, you know, whatever, the certif, people from the state who were there to certify the program. And they, those students did a great job, all of them, outstanding. I mean, when you saw these kids, you said, there's hope. We, we, we do, we are still producing some good kids, and these kids are outstanding. Uh, and also the comments that came back from both of the individuals from the state, and they're from the Atlanta area and all, they said, our program stacks up just as good or better than a lot of schools in Gwinnett County, Fulton County, Cobb County. They said, our program in many ways was much better than those programs. So my hats are off to, uh, Ms. uh, Ms. Killmark and her students for a great job. And Dr. Barber, they, they, they are doing a good job. So, uh, it was great.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dees?
Uh, of course, uh, the tragedies over the weekend affected us all, and we continue to do so, especially for those families. I mean, uh, only the Lord can help that in time, but we, uh, certainly do share in their grief, and we'll continue to do so, as they were some of my friends. Also, would like to, uh, commend everybody that was a part of the, uh, kindergarten, the Farm Bureau Kindergarten Farm Day at the Ag Center. Let's see, on Wednesday, half the kindergarteners in the system attended, uh, Ag Day, and on Friday, the other half of the kindergarten. And, uh, thanks to the, to the students and all the volunteers, and of course, the use of the Ag Center for our own students. And, uh, that went really well. Earlier, a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity for the first time to have the Farm Bureau, uh, Mobile Classroom at Ag Center, and some of the, uh, kindergarten, I mean, some of the elementary school classes from, from the elementary, uh, came to the Ag Center and toured that, and it went really well. Appreciate everybody's support and continued support of the Ag Center, the Ag, uh, program as, again, as, as the other, uh, programs out there. We'll, we'll stack, I'll stack the Ag, uh, program up against anybody else around it, the cares that come. And they, and the ones that do visit the Ag Center, they all go home wanting to have one just like it. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Waters?
Just as been mentioned, continuing to pray for the families that were affected by the, the tragedies, and I'm, I'm very proud of how our community has come together to support each other and those families and friends to, to get through this, uh, horrible, tragic time. For the administrators, the staff, um, I know how hard they have prepared for this testing timeframe. Um, I know that their hard work will pay off. We will see that, and I can't wait to hear our reports when they come through the next time to show us and the results of all of those hard work. So students, do your best. This test does not define you. It's just a, a test to tell us your progress, and I wish everyone the best.
Okay. Ms. Nelson?
Well, um, I say kudos to everything, everyone's, our ditto to everything that everyone else has said, especially about the families that are grieving in our community, and even us within our own staff. Um, I do want to, uh, commend the students and, and say to the staff and to the teachers and to the students, we're coming to the closing of the school year. I know we're all excited. Um, endure the test, do your best, and whatever you do is good enough, but we need you to do the best that you can. I know everybody's getting excited about graduating and, and, um, getting ready to celebrate. We just ask that everybody continue to be safe as we prepare for the end of the year.
Ms. Etheridge?
I just want to encourage all the children. I can't be at every school, but I will be at Ware's Borough in the morning as a cheerleader. You've been working hard for this, so go get it.
Okay. Tyre?
Just ditto to what everybody has said, and, and I just have to, for a personal note, to say I'm extremely proud of Liz Osborne. Her family is so close to our family, and, uh, we've known, I've known, uh, her daddy his whole life, and, of course, when he got married, and Andre just became a part of our family too, and I'm just really excited and proud of her to, uh, have made this honor for herself and for Ware County.
Hey, as I said before, uh, earlier, uh, we're proud of our, our Golden Achievement recipients, and we're also proud of Liz. Uh, I was telling somebody, I think I was telling Mr. Smith, last time I saw her, she was little girl. Time flies. It gets faster and faster. Just a sign of the times, though, there. All right. This is part of the, uh, other I don't like to do, but I, I am honored to, uh, do the condolences, uh, of these people that are either community-related, but most of them are board employees related to this. Anna Roberts, teacher at Ware County Middle, and the loss of her grand, uh, great-grandmother, Una Corson, and her grandfather Danny Spivey. Robert Benchoff, Director of Facilities and Maintenance, and the loss of his brother-in-law Charlie Bracewell. Uh, Teresa Grant, SRO at Williams Heights Elementary, and the loss of her mother, Edith Randall. Edie Wester, former Central Office Receptionist, and the loss of her husband, George Wester. Roy Smith, teacher at Williams Heights Elementary, and the loss of her grandmother, Sandra His, Henderson, who is also the mother of recent Central Office Retiree Darlene Tooten. Michelle Daniels, teacher at Ware County High School, and the loss of her father-in-law, Ronnie Daniels. Dr. Johnson, Assistant Principal at Williams Heights, and Calvin Johnson, counselor at White Cross Middle, and the loss of, uh, her father, Jason Ratliff, Ratliff. Can't read, sorry. Family and friends of, uh, Kenneth Larissy, a bus driver at the Transportation Department. The family and friends of Cicero Corbett, who retired from the Ware County Board of Education. Superintendent Burth Smith, and the loss of his grandmother, Jane Bennett. Other family members include Kim Smith, Dr. Kim Callahan, Selena Tom, Thomas, and, uh, Jennifer Cox, Peggy Davis, bus driver Amber Mitchell, specially coordinator at Center, and Ben Mitchell, P.E. teacher at Memorial Drive, and the loss of their grandson and nephew, Caden Cox. Uh, Olivia Smith and John Smith Jr., teachers at Ware County High School, and the loss of Olivia's father. Seems like the list gets longer and longer.
It does.
Kayla McDuffie, teacher at Memorial Drive, and the loss of her grandmother, Marion Peterson. Alicia Harkero, Payroll and Benefits Department, and the loss of her grandmother-in-law, Hazel Lee Justice. Kristen Pittman, teacher at Ware Middle, and the loss of her former husband and father of her children, Blake Pittman. Uh, Elizabeth Sings, teacher at Ware Middle, and the loss of her uncle, uh, James Bowles. Samantha Williams, parapro at Ruskin Elementary, and the loss of her aunt, John Williams. Excuse me, Joanne Williams. Uh, Micah Williams, teacher at Ruskin Elementary, and the loss of his grandfather, Willard Billy Cruz. Angela Cox, teacher at Daffodil Pre-K, and the loss of her mother, Dorothy Wigmas. Uh, Wanda Riggs, custodian at, uh, Daffodil Pre-K, and the loss of her great-granddaughter, Solstice Bram. Board member Toni Nelson, and the loss of her uncles, Aaron Hill and Billy Hill. And the family and friends of Myra Leon Dial Bennett, former food assistant at Ware's Borough Elementary and Ware County Middle School. And also, as others have mentioned, the, uh, tragedies that happened over the weekend. Uh, we still want to keep all those, uh, in our prayers. Uh, as someone said earlier, only the good Lord can help that, that loss there. But there being, been, uh, being no other business before the board, I hereby adjourn this meeting.